Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please? Or actually, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong thing again. I'm on the wrong page again. So what we're going to do is we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And I see our student liaison is here. Would you lead us, please, in the pledge?
Of course. Thank you.
Hit it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Eden. All right, we're going to be moving on to the roll call.
Councilmember Cruz, present. Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Brigham.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Bagby.
Present.
And student liaison, Eden.
And there is no report out on closed session. We have conflict of interest declarations?
Yeah, I won't be able to sit in on the Times Square issue.
Okay, great. And did you have something, Jason?
I think I'm okay. The only thing I'm concerned about is item number two. I live in one of the districts.
On the landscape and lighting?
Yeah.
Would you recommend pulling that from the consent item later on? Or if the chief's not voting on it? Or what do you recommend, Kevin?
You can recuse yourself if you feel like you need to.
Yeah, we can pull it and vote it on separately.
I'm not sure if you really need to, but to be on the same side.
It's really not specific.
It's not specific? Oh, that's great. Okay, then that answers that question. Okay, great. And so agenda review. I think we have a few things to review.
We do. Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor, due to circumstances, the city recommends that the city council not address items seven and nine through 12 on the agenda and either consider those items at the next regular council meeting on March 13th or a special meeting on March 6th. Furthermore, it has come to our attention that after posting the agenda, the city of Cloverdale experienced a local emergency related to the storm events. The local emergency occurred after posting of the agenda, including flooding, localized mudslides, and impacts to the water and wastewater treatment plant. So what we're asking here is kind of two steps. The first step would be that staff is recommending the city council add an emergency agenda item to declare a local emergency. This item is a resolution and it requires a two-thirds vote of the council in order for you to consider this item. You can open up to public hearing and then I would ask for a motion on whether to consider the resolution.
Okay. I'll open up a public hearing on this item at this time. Would anyone like to come forward and address the proclamation of local emergency by Director of Emergency Services for the city of Cloverdale? All right, well, seeing none, is there any discussion on the dais?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, but you know, I just want to commend city staff for the wonderful job you did over the last 48 hours. Public Works was out there taking care of the drains, taking care of mudslides, cleaning the streets. They did a wonderful job. Mark, your crew is to be commended, so thank you for that.
It's true.
Anyone else? At this time, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution by title only.
First, there's two steps.
Just sorry. No, 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 we need to vote on whether or not to...
We have to do this correctly. So the first vote is that will you entertain the resolution and then we'll talk about the resolution.
Yeah.
So we're amending the agenda with the first.
Yeah, we need to vote on amending the agenda. Would someone like to make a motion?
Some move, Madam Mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And may we have a roll call, Linda?
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Bagby.
Aye.
Eden.
Aye. And at this time, I would entertain a motion regarding the proclamation before us.
Offering the resolution?
You're off on the resolution, yes.
I will do that. City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 016-2019, Emergency Resolution under Government Code Section 54954.2B2, Ratifying an Emergency Proclamation Issued by the Director of Emergency Services. Did you want to discuss this before we actually...
Well, you could also open the public hearing before.
We'll open it, yeah.
I thought you did that already, but go ahead.
Well, I guess we opened the public hearing on whether or not to change the agenda. So at this time, would anyone like to come before the council to make a comment on the emergency resolution and consideration? All right, seeing none, is there any further discussion? So I'll entertain them. We have a motion.
I did that.
And we need... And would anyone like to give a second?
I'll second.
Okay, great. So, roll call.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Bagby.
Aye.
Eden.
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, so moving on, we are going to go to, let's see, we're going to go to the consent calendar. Is anyone interested in pulling any of the items for discussion from the consent calendar? All right, would anyone like to... Have you had a chance to review that?
Madam Mayor, we might want to open the public comment.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. You're...
And then also, I see some members from certain lighting and landscape districts that may want to talk on item number two.
Okay.
So we might want to pull that for public discussion.
Is any member of the public interested in pulling the second item on the consent calendar? Okay, great. I'm going to leave that for a moment and go back to just general public comments regarding anything else. So at this time, I'm going to backpedal a little bit and ask any person wishing to speak to the city council on an item not listed on the agenda may do so. At this time, members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on items not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must go to the podium advised by the mayor and speak directly into the microphone. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is authorized. Would anyone like to come forward at this time and speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Sean Bovee, Cloverdale. Good evening, members of the council, city staff, Sergeant Parker. I just wanted to take a minute and tell you thank you for opening up the Citrus Fair last night. We were kind of monitoring the situation down there with the homeless on the river and there were probably 10 folks or so that really probably could have used a place to stay. Unfortunately, I don't think any of them took us up on the opportunity to come up to the Citrus Fair, but I wanted to tell you thank you and commend all of you for your hard work and just getting us there. It was a very neat thing, I think, for the city of Cloverdale to be able to offer that type of service here in town. There was some conversation about being able to ship them down to Hildsburg. I personally was overwhelmed with the work that all of you had done to get the Citrus Fair open and just to be... It was probably 1:00 in the morning before we got word, but 1:00 going down there and telling those folks that, hey, there is a place for you to go, was huge. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I will close public comment and we're going to go to our consent calendar. I believe there was interest in pulling item number two. Is that the case? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item number two from the consent calendar for public discussion.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. And we may have a vote on the consent calendar minus item two.
Move approval of the consent calendar, pulling item number two.
Sir, a second?
I second.
Okay. Linda, do you need to...
Yep. Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Bagby.
Aye.
Eden.
Aye.
Okay, pulling item number two. Mark, would you like to take this one?
So every year, in order to do the engineering report for the landscape and lighting districts to assess the fees for the coming fiscal year, this is a report that's put together by an engineering firm to go out and assess the districts, see where we are financially for each one of them, and make recommendations based on that. This is the first step of a multi-step process where we'll have public meetings to reach out into the L&amp;L districts to get feedback from them. But this is just appointing the engineer of record to do the work.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments or...
Just one, a couple of questions. Mark, we put this out on an RFP, did we?
I did. I did put it on an RFP for this. I reached out to three engineering firms that got one response.
And that was from all of them?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
From Coastland. Yes.
Coastland, I'm sorry.
Right. All right, at this moment, at this time, any other comments or questions? I'll open it up for a public comment. If anyone would like to comment on this item, feel free to come forward. Please do come forward and... Do you have the notepad right there? Please fill out the notepad and state your name for the record, please.
I have a long last name.
All right. Good evening. I'm Dan Bradchelini. I live at 123 Great Gables in the cottage. And last year, we were told by the city that they would go out and get three quotes before issuing the work order for the engineering report. And I understand that you did do that and who responded?
Coastland Engineering.
They're the only ones?
That's correct.
And who else did you quote?
There is no quotations here. I asked for proposals.
I'm sorry, what was that?
For professional services, we do not get quotations. We get proposals.
Okay, and did you get any?
The two other firms I reached out to declined.
They declined. Did you reach out to anyone in Cloverdale?
There are no other firms in Cloverdale that can do this work.
Oh, okay. Well, that's kind of interesting because if you read the Landscape Act, any licensed engineer with the state of California is qualified to do this kind of work, including the city engineer who we do pay. And so I'm really surprised that you didn't quote anyone here in Cloverdale. You've given this job to Coastline for 18 years now and it just seems like it's time to try and find somebody else to test the market here because there's no competition. They just come up with a cost. You guys give it to them and we, the residents of the district, have no say in this. And I just think that we need to go out and find some other organizations to do this because how do we know that the $16,000 quote is a true reflection of what it costs to do this? Last year it was $19,000, so they dropped the price three. I don't understand why. So is that possible that you could go back out? You know, there's no rush. We don't have to do this exactly tonight. We could take a little more time and see if we can find another organization that could do this.
We do have a schedule, but everything has to be done before the end of the fiscal year in order to include it in the budget. So there is a timeline to this and it's important that we get this done now.
Yeah, the engineering report's due in June. Seems like there's a lot of time.
We also have public hearings during this.
Okay, that was my idea.
Great, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue? All right, I'll bring it back to the council. Do you have any comments, sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, Dan, I have to tell you, I share your frustration, not only in this particular instance, but many other times we go out on bid, we put RFPs out there and we get no one to respond to Cloverdale. We're too far, we're too small. A perfect example coming up is our CPA. I believe this is our last year that we can use our CPA and we have... Last year, technically, we weren't supposed to use them, but we got permission to go ahead and use them one more time because nobody bid. And this year, we're going to use them again and next year, I'm not sure what we're going to do, but it just seems nobody wants to bid on projects up in Cloverdale. So I share your frustration.
City engineer, did you have to add?
I'd like to point a clarification. For professional services in the state of California, we don't solicit bids. We don't base our selection based on cost. We select based on qualifications. So just a point of clarification, these are not bid items. These are just requests for proposals.
Right, thank you. Anyone else have anything to add?
Nope.
If not, I will... Notation, Madam Mayor, please.
Yes, city engineer, is it possible to reach out to other companies?
We can advertise this statewide if we want to, but the thing is, is that the truth is these engineering firms chose not to submit a proposal simply because they're overwhelmed with work. There's too much work out there right now. And so I got two other firms, very large firms, that have the capacity to do something like this. They've done it for other cities and they chose not to because, again, it's just too much work out there for them to take on another new entity and start reformulating, you know, understanding and reformulating. So they chose to pass this year. They may do it next year, this year they did not.
Is it possible that you could explain why there was lower cost this year?
Simply because they've managed to address a lot of issues that were beyond the normal reporting and so they've consolidated some of that effort for this year's report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, unless there's further discussion...
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move approval of item number two, city of Cloverdale contracting with Coastland for the lighting and landscape district services.
Sir, a second?
I second.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Bagby.
Aye.
Eden.
Aye.
All right. We're going to move on to communications and I'm seeing none. Is there anything new, though, since this afternoon, since it's been a...
No, just communications.
It's been a wild ride, okay. And we are going to, let's see, we are moving on to item eight. Am I have that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And consideration of Resolution Number 014-2019, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale amendment with Alexander Valley Healthcare for certain portions of property located at Times Square property for design and development of wellness facility. I believe that is Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
I have to recuse myself from this because I own property that's within 200 feet of that property, although I wish I could, you guys.
Well, thank you and have a lovely evening.
So I don't have to come back, right?
No, you don't have to come back.
Good enough.
All right.
Mayor, councilmember, this item is the purchase and sale agreement between the city and Alexander Valley Health for the facility location at Lot B at the Times Square subdivision. This agreement represents the next step in the process of the development of the wellness center at Times Square. The purchase and sale agreement specifically is designed to facilitate how the city will convey the parcel to ABH. The agreement is a binding obligation for the city to sell the parcel to ABH provided that they can achieve all the entitlements. So that's, you know, going through the planning process, the CECLAW, the development agreement as well. Just to note, approval of this agreement does not grant any, does not obligate the city to grant any other approvals. There's still the road to go through with all the other things that we can discuss. It does set forth a method to determine the sales price and that you can see it's a pretty complicated formula there involving two appraisals and if they're different, then we have to settle on a price in between the two. If this agreement is approved tonight, the next step will be that Alexander Valley will formally approve, be applying for entitlements and we will begin the process of negotiating the development agreement. And the development agreement will really spell out all the conditions of approval that will be placed on the project and that's when we're going to start talking about sidewalks and roads and lighting and all those types of things that are associated with the project. So staff does recommend approving the attached resolution, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement with Alexander Healthcare. And I know obviously the applicant is here tonight, so we can bring them up if you have any questions and I'm here for questions as well.
Great. Does anybody have any questions of staff right now?
Nothing technical there.
I do, but I'm going to wait.
You're going to wait, okay. And so in that case, I'm going to go ahead and open comment and actually invite the applicant to go ahead and come down first if you have anything that you would like to say regarding this item. And if the applicant is not racing down the aisle, would anyone else from the public like to make a comment on this item? This is your chance, Debbie.
So I don't want to be emotional, that's why I was kind of hesitant. We've been working on this for a very long time. We're very excited to get this part of the process completed so we can move forward. We understand the negotiation part of deciding on the purchase price. It's all outlined in our agreement. The development agreement is kind of in the works with the city attorney and our attorney, who is present, if you have any questions for them. We're looking for the city council approval so we can build a beautiful wellness center for this community and proceed to provide services locally.
Okay, great. Any questions for me? Or any questions for Debbie? Okay. And would anyone else from the public like to come forward at this time with any questions? All right, I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
If that's the case, I'm going to close. Going once, going twice. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the dais. Do you have, did you have some questions? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do. And this is, I guess, for Kevin and Mark. And Debbie, I don't mean to rain on your parade by any means, but I always feel that I have to, you know, watch, be careful for the city. We're going to go ahead with this transaction tonight. If my question for staff in six months or a year, if Debbie comes to us and says, you know, something happened, we just can't get our financing, we don't want this lot anymore, we're going to sell it. What protects us? Do we have first right of refusal?
We do.
Okay, on the sale back.
And the sale will not go through until the project is completed with the entitlements. If they get to that point, which we suspect they will, that's going to be a significant investment on their part to get to that point. So we do have, you know, release valves and ways to get out of this if things do go south.
And not to get out in the sense that we want to hurt the facility, but we just want to protect the visual views of the city there. So that's good. Is there a drop dead date when they have to start the project and submit things to us? Or could we be having this conversation four years from now?
This agreement is really just for us to start negotiating the sales price. We need to get into the development agreement, which will come next, and that's really going to be a lot more detailed on the expectations from the city as well as ABH. In that agreement, there will be the things you described. We're starting to assemble staff to start working on deal points. One other thing I'd like to report is we have come to an agreement on a CECLAW consultant, so I'm hoping to bring that contract to you next meeting on March 13th. And that's a consultant we've used in the past who's familiar with town and I think is very reasonable and does what needs to be done and not too much. We've been in discussions with ABH on that. So that's kind of the next thing and that will be hopefully on March 13th, where you'll be seeing the contract. And then, again, the development agreement. We need them to apply, to formally apply with all the planning requirements, the site plan, the elevations, all those things. But the CECLAW document does take the longest, so we're hoping to get that rolling with your approval next meeting.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, Marta? Mr. Turner? Okay, well, if there is no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion on this item by title only. City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 014-2019, a resolution of the city council of the city of Cloverdale, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement PSA with Alexander Valley Healthcare for certain portions of property identified as Lot B on the Times Square final map for design and development of a wellness facility.
May I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
And when Linda is ready, we will have a roll call.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Bagby.
Aye.
Eden.
Aye.
Yay. You've got your cheerleaders in the back. All right. And in the interest of expediency, actually, I have a question for our assistant city manager. Should we just, on subcommittee reports and council reports, should we just continue that to the next Wednesday as well?
We can, it's up to you.
Let's go ahead and do that since I was a little busy and I didn't get mine done. Jason, however, is a student and he has turned his in, so I just want to make sure that I acknowledge that. And we have something else? And actually, Eden, would you like to go ahead and give your report for this week just in case there's something timely that we need to know about?
Sounds good.
Okay, great.
Thank you. So the girls' basketball team has had a great season so far and has only lost one game. Last I heard, their playoff game for this week was canceled and I'm not sure when it was rescheduled, but I'm sure we'll hear about it in the paper. There was great high school participation at the Citrus Fair this year. The interact club had a junior exhibit, which I helped on. The farm-to-table class made a board. The photography and farm-to-table class had a live booth to explain one of their projects and the construction class drove a kiosk they built along with the Army Corps of Engineers through the parade. So that was really impressive. It was like a tiny house.
None of us got to see it who were riding in the parade, unfortunately. I think Marta got to see it because she was announcing.
Marta got to see everything.
Yes. We'll have to, you'll have to make sure to share the pictures, so.
I think it's going to be Lake Sonoma, is what I heard. I'll have more details as they get going with it, but I'm pretty sure it's Lake Sonoma.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Mr. Eagle would have been today, but the rain made it to where it was rescheduled. I don't know when it'll be. I think they're still figuring it out, but that should be announced eventually. And then finally, on March 30th, so it's a little while off, farm-to-table, business management, and the maker class are all working together to hold a food fest in the cafeteria from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. There will be lunch, dessert, drinks, stickers, signs, and viable goods, all handmade by the high schoolers. So that should be really fun.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And city engineer Rincon, did you have something for us as well?
No report.
No report? Just making sure I don't forget Eden. Thank you very much. And Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I'm just looking back on the agenda packet and there was an official resolution on page 23 of the packet to approve the lighting and landscape district. I just kind of winged it. I didn't see this.
That's right.
Assistant city manager, would you like me to formally read the... Linda's saying yes, okay.[1624.32]
Thank you. Thanks for keeping us straight, Linda.
City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 010-2019, a resolution of the city council of the city of Cloverdale, appointing Coastland Civil Engineer as the engineer of work for the city of Cloverdale, lighting and landscape assessment district, and directing the preparation and filing of the engineer's report for the fiscal year 2019 through 2020, pursuant to the Lighting and Landscape Act of 1972.
And do we have a second?
I will second.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
She's not, she's no longer with us.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
And Eden?
Aye.
Good catch, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay.
All right, so, did you have something else?
I have one thing, just a quick, do we have the, hold on, before I put my foot in my mouth? Let me look. Give me just one second. You know, I'm gonna risk putting my foot in my mouth. Do we have the Public Works Subcommittee before our next city council meeting?
That's a good question. Shall I mark?
I believe we're meeting, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but I think it's gonna be after the emergency council meeting.
March 26th is the next Public Works?
So, no. Okay, so then I can push mine off to the next meeting in the interest of time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, is there anything else, any other announcements, or?
Well, I have been working on, with the Sonoma County Economic Development Board to interview several individuals here in Cloverdale, to make sure that we have a thorough report on the 2019 report of the city, and the interviews begin tomorrow with the researcher from the Economic Development Board.
And I believe I have an appointment, so.
Yes.
Do you have an appointment?
No.
Any minute appointment? Great, well, we'll see, Marta, I believe she's coordinating that. And actually, I'm gonna put our assistant city manager on the spot, and we did not discuss the status regarding the Police Finance Administration Subcommittee tomorrow. Was there any preference from the city manager on whether or not that's still on for tomorrow?
It is on.
Okay, great, so, there's the answer to your question. Sergeant Parker, were you wondering about that? We are on for tomorrow for police?
Yes.
Okay, great, so that answers your question. I'm sorry, didn't get a chance to follow it up with every, all the other activities this afternoon.
To the students, do we, do you have school tomorrow?
I don't know yet. We didn't have school today, but they usually call between 7:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. to let us know. I think we do, though.
We have a scheduled demonstration class tomorrow, too.
Okay, great, I guess you'll have to check in after seven. Is there any other, anything else from city manager's office?
Just thank you again, Mark, and your crew. I know you guys were up all night, and I know David was, too, and he would have liked to have been here, but his house is not underwater, but saw some pictures, so thanks, everyone, for cooperating.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it.
Yeah, actually, I want to thank our city engineer and all of the city staff, especially our Hector's crew and Darren's crew, and who am I, Jay, who else am I, who am I leaving out?
Of course, our street crew.
And our street crew, yeah, they really did some serious hero work last night.
Yeah, everyone worked till about 4:00 a.m. this morning, and then reported to duty at 7:00 a.m., so.
Right, and that's one of the reasons for the curtailed meeting. In addition, our city manager is an island unto himself right now in Geyserville, and it was very obvious that whichever attorney was going to come and fill in for Jose was going to have a hard time getting here, given the situation with Highway 37. So, I would just want to give our sincerest thanks to our city crew. We had an opportunity, Councilmember Cruz and Vice Mayor Walter and I had an opportunity to tour the slide areas, the flood areas, the mud areas, and before we could even get there, the crews were already cleaning up this morning after having worked until 2:00 or 3:00 a.m. last night, so it's really obvious that we are incredibly lucky in this community and are served by people with incredible work ethics, and.
Indeed, absolutely. They're very dedicated, and we need to recognize that.
And we need to recognize them, so, I just want to say.
And likewise, I don't want anyone to think that we're done, you know, there's still work the rest of the week to clean up, so we still know there are spots around town that we'll get a water tender, and we'll wash down the streets.
Yeah, they were actually in the process of renting equipment while we were, and getting it on the street between the meeting and by the time we even had the tour going this morning, so the efficiency and dedication of our city crew is, it's just amazing, and I just wanted to give a heartfelt thank you. And just to, hopefully, through anybody's questions who might be watching, we're gonna continue all of these items until our emergency meeting next Wednesday.
I was gonna clarify.
You want to go ahead and clarify?
If we were gonna do a meeting one week from tonight on March 6th, or try to move the items to March 13th?
We already have, we already had a heavy schedule tonight, and we have had a heavy schedule for the 13th, so we'll try to take care of much of it as we can. It's March 6th.
March, yeah, one week from tonight.
One week from tonight at 6:00 p.m., so.
Okay, we'll get that going.
Great, with that, are there any other comments or announcements?
For the benefit of those who are not here, and the people who are here today, is it possible to give somewhat of a summary of what is the status of water plant, sewer plant, and roads here in Cloverdale?
So, Mr. Assistant City Manager?
Can you repeat that?
If we could give a status of the conditions of roads, water plant, and sewer plant for the people.
Well, Mark, I'm gonna have to ask someone on that. The roads are, okay, we had no major landslide, we had debris slide, and that was up above Portofino. It was on private property, but we jumped on it, directed the debris, cleared the debris, and directed flow to the closest storm sewer inlet. Again, it was off of private property, but we were protecting the homes on Portofino Way, and the water plant was close to inundation. Luckily, it did not inundate the plant, so there's no threat to the water supply, and it's being managed. As the river subsides, we'll be able to bring two other wells back online, but they're working tonight, and they're filling up our water system as we speak. The sewer plant, of course, was at maximum capacity. There was the idea that we may have to pump the secondary treated sewage into the river as an emergency relief, but luckily, that did not need to happen, and State Board was made aware of it. They concurred that we had to do what we had to do in these emergencies, but it looks like that's no longer needed now.
Great, thank you. And we'll have further updates on, or Facebook and through press releases, or do you want to?
Well, I just thought, I mean, as Mr. Bovee said, we did end up opening the Citrus Fair. I know a couple of RVs showed up. I don't think any people actually showed up. I could be wrong about that. They were going to close the emergency shelter today, and we were directed to send people to the one in Santa Rosa and Sebastopol. I do know that the Highway 12 was closed for a better part of the day, and Sebastopol was really hard to get to, so it was more the Santa Rosa one. I want to thank the police. I did hear that they were really trying to help people who were under the bridge during the height of the storm, who really were reluctant to come out, and I think they eventually[1708.33]